Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the May 15th, 2024 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We will call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum present today. We did not have any public comments registered. So our first item of business is to approve the minutes of the May 1st, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. Anybody have any additions or corrections to those minutes?
If there are none, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Jacob.
Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Ms. Ava Water.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Silas.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye. Mr. Bromley.
Madam Chair, if you will permit us a moment, we are working with the applicant on determining the best course of action for Item B on the consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
And we have recommended to the applicant, because there are still some moving parts with that one, that he withdraw it from the agenda and that the other option would be for it to be taken off the consent agenda and moved to the staff reports and other business for discussion and a recommendation of deferral. However, he is consulting with his client right now. And if you permit him to go to the podium and give us their decision on how they would like to proceed.
Okay.
Thank you all. Chris McGuire with Huddleston Steel Engineering. Our client would like to withdraw the submittal from this cycle, so we ask to be removed from the consent agenda.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right then, so for our consent agenda, with the removal of Item B, is there anything else on the consent agenda that anybody saw that they would like to have removed for further discussion? Or if not, we would be ready for a motion on the consent agenda with the exception of Item B.
Move for approval minus Item B.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Jacob.
Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Ms. Ava Water.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Silas.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye. Okay, next we have our GDO portion of our agenda. We have one item there today, and it is metal lark Phase 1 horizontal property regime plat for 48 units on 6.04 acres, Zone PRD, GDO 1 and GDO 2, located along Wilkinson Pike. Toll Southeast LP Company, Inc. is the developer. Good afternoon, Mr. Barbie.
Good afternoon, Chair Jones and members of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. The next item on your agenda is a horizontal property regime plat for the metal lark town home subdivision, Phase 1 Lot 1. You would typically find this on your consent agenda, but as this property is located inside the gateway design overlay, it is required to come before you for approval. This is a horizontal property regime plat for 48 units on 6.04 acres, and it is located along Williamson Pike. The plat is generally in good order, and we would request that any approval be made subject to all staff comments.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments regarding this plat?
If there are none, I move for approval subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Jacob.
Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Ms. Ava Water.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Silas.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye. Okay. After GDO, we have plats and plans, several items, three items there today. We've got, the first item is Hearthwood, lots 3 through 5, master plan amendment and preliminary plat for three lots on 8.4 acres, Zone CH and RM 12, located along South Rutherford Boulevard, north of Chandler Place. Hearthwood Development LLC is the developer. Ms. Smith, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. As you can see on the above aerial drawing, this shows the pre-existing three lots of record that exists for the parcels. There is the one lot here that sits by itself. There is this one that connects back to really these back sections, and then there's this center one. What they're looking at doing is eliminating some of those lines and adjusting where their location is. And then, as you can see on this portion, you can see the dash lines representing that existing parcel, but they're looking at parcel to have a 3 and a 4 parcel, and then this bigger parcel actually includes this triangular shape area. Currently, the way that the map is recorded is there is an access and public drainage easement that comes down this back section and then actually takes up this entire component in this area. Those will remain in place, but what we'll be gaining here is a new identified access point a little bit further from the Chandler and Rutherford intersection, and then we'll still have one that they were previously anticipating at this location. And then there will be cross access that's provided between these properties and then ties back into a future private road. You may recall seeing this about a year ago when we had talked about having this back private road be a public right-of-way called Medallion Drive. As people were working through those particular issues, they decided that it was more advantageous to keep this as a private access road. As the preliminary plat is set up, staff included in the staff conditions for the master plan, and the master plan page is this particular page, and for a little bit more reference is they've put together a rough concept of what they might want to see on that Lot 5. However, because these are preliminary plats, and then you'll be looking at their final plat, it does not vest any rights for this approval as it's shown on this map. This was mostly to be able to show that the access points would work for the project and that drainage could also work for the project. In this particular case, what staff wanted to make sure that was also clearly delineated, there was a note on the plan regarding construction of sidewalk along this back section, which has been an area of contention for a while. So in Conditions 8 and 9, we've included in there some language that clarifies what's constructed when for that back private drive as the project progresses. We did get a traffic analysis on this particular parcel for if it develops, how does Chandler and Rutherford work as far as not having a signalized intersection there? Our traffic division is still in review of that to make sure that if it does have its own stand-alone without coming back to that signalized intersection at Haven, that it's not needed for the first phase of their development. So with that, in the conditions of approval that we've put in the staff report, we believe it's in good order for adopting the preliminary plat and master plan for Hearthwood. There's any questions? I think the applicant and their engineer is actually available for any questions.
I just have a clarification question. So Lot 3 on this plat is drawn like a flag lot, so the access easement looks like it's a part of Lot 3 at the back, but then Lot 4 is, you know, completely, it goes all the way through and just encompasses the...
Yes. So 3, you can see the boundary here.
Mm-hmm.
Comes back, and then that area along the backside is a cross access and drainage easement so that the other properties have the ability to tie into that roadway. And then, yes, Lot 4's access currently is in the middle from South Rutherford, and the anticipation is that when Lot 5 develops, they are talking about building this connection point, then back to here and then back here. So both Lots 4 and 5 will have additional access points when Lot 5 develops. But the concern was is if Lot 5 developed by itself, that the private drive would be constructed all the way back to Haven even though they have access to Chandler now.
Okay. And so Lot 2 is not changing at all? This is the way it was originally?
Correct, and that currently has the Speedway fueling on it.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So you're saying if Lot 5 gets developed, the back road is going to be built also? Is that a correct statement?
Only this portion of the back road would be developed to this point and then cross access back out to Rutherford.
Okay.
And I'm trying to remember if this comes all the way to Rutherford here as well, Bill?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, so you have to come through Lot 4.
But the back of Lot 4, does it have cross access across the back?
It also has currently a recorded cross access easement for both drainage and circulation.
It was originally proposed as a shared access drive, and then they went, they wanted to make it public right-of-way, and now they're wanting to make it a shared access drive, private shared access drive again, kind of reverting back to the original.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
There's that access there.
Yes. So Bill did clarify, it's hard to see on this version, but this does come all the way down to Rutherford. But because the median's there, you wouldn't be able to take a left out, but at this point you could actually take a left in and a left out and access it if you were coming southbound.
So that'll be set up with...
But their site plan will be coming later.
Is that what, if I'm turned around right?
Say again?
That'll be set up just with a right only.
On that, on this one, correct. Because this one, there's already that, I believe, median already in place, and that's one of the reasons too that our traffic division wants to make sure, what does the traffic analysis state, that they need to have in place with that first one. So if the traffic analysis comes back differently, there may be some small modifications to meet those needs.
Okay. Any other questions?
If there are none, I'll make a motion we approve subject to all staff comments. Second.
Ms. Jacob.
Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Ms. Ava Water.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Silas.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye. Okay, next we have the Hearthwood lots 3 through 5, the final plat, the three lots on 8.4 acres, Zone Commercial Highway and RM 12, located along South Rutherford Boulevard, north of Chandler Place. Hearthwood Development LLC is the developer. Ms. Smith.
So this map is the companion to the preliminary plat we just looked at, but here you can see a little bit more clearly that private drive along the backside of the property, and you can see more clearly the dash line where Lot 3 currently is, that it would shrink and get smaller, and Lot 4 would increase in size, and kind of that odd-shaped finger that they had previously would go away, and then we would get this new sewer easement for potentially the new project. But again, that new project has not come to you yet as a site plan review, and staff would still be awaiting that to finalize those, but we believe this one is in good order and is consistent with the preliminary plat. And then again, we have several staff comments that are really minor and believe it's in good order for consideration of your approval.
Okay. Any questions regarding the final plat?
If there are none, I'll make a motion that we approve subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Jacob.
Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Ms. Ava Water.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Silas.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. Next, we have the Aldi Inc., Lascasis Pike site plan for a 20,670 square foot grocery store on 3.74 acres, Zone CF, located along Lascasis Pike and Old Lascasis Road. HEMG LLC is the developer. Ms. Smith.
So one thing I would like to point out on this aerial, just to give you an idea where the location is, the last time you saw this, you saw the preliminary plat and the final plat, and we had rescheduled Aldi's site plan to come back. However, I forgot to change this as we were working through it with the master developer. They decided it was too difficult to maintain in that area and have their flag lot for the Aldis touch all the way up to South Rutherford. So when you look at the plan set, the parcel line for Aldi stops at this point, and this is just one single line that separates out future parcels to the north. But we have been working on kind of all of the parcels at the same time. You may recall, we saw a master plan on this particular layout for the Aldi site, so we did start to review and address some of that with their master plan layout. And their master plan layout, as I've mentioned previously, there was a traffic analysis done for the full site, and then this is what you saw last time with the Aldis being on the southerly portion, having both access to Old Lascasis as their secondary entrance and their primary entrance off of Lascasis Pike, and then people can traverse in through this section. So should they want to go a different direction as they're exiting the site, they have those opportunities available to them. And in the future, what we're also going to be seeing is cross access that's coming up the site as well and between these two parcels. So it does have a very large water feature in it that constrains the site, and so staff has been working diligently with the applicant's engineer to work through those items. As I mentioned, the Aldi site is at this location. Their engineer will be bringing up after my short presentation some additional requests that they have. Staff looked at it from a, are you meeting the current design guidelines and the layouts of the building? So this particular site, a little bit different from others, their loading dock is off to this side, tucked away a little bit more so than some of their other sites, and they've reoriented the building. They have their shopping cart storage here behind a retaining wall, and then they've oriented the primary face of the building to face Lascasis Pike with more of the glazing facing in that particular direction. So as we're looking at this one that says elevation 2, where my cursor is, as you're driving into the property, this section is the portion of the building that you'll see in the driveway. There is a small 10-foot tall antenna that just comes off the side of the building, but not large scale, but they, most of the glazing, again, bless you, facing the frontage towards Lascasis Pike. And then to the north, you'll see this portion of the frontage, and this is where that loading dock is that we talked about. The loading dock and their trash enclosure is located in this section, so as you look at it coming through Old Lascasis Pike, they will have landscape screening for that dock area as well. Here it is. And the handrails so that basically somebody doesn't traverse into there, and here you can see that dumpster enclosure area, which they're proposing to have a material similar to the nichiah, but not a stone block, brick veneer that we would normally see because of half of it is actually buried and hidden, as well as this landscape buffer that you'll have in front of it. So that is one, we think, reasonable request, and that color of the material they're looking at it being similar to the nichiah that is in back of it, so that again, it just looks and flows well, and you almost don't notice it. Normally, I would not include a red line plan in your plan set, but these were so that the architect understood what things that we were looking at and what Mr. Huddleston will be bringing to you as kind of their recommendation or their request. Staff was just looking at, our policy says that if you can see the backside of a parapet wall, it should be finished the same way as the front side. So this area that you can see, as well as this back section, was of concern. I believe they're proposing a roof membrane that's painted the same silver color, and that is in the field on Franklin, which Bill will share with you shortly. And then the second thing that staff was looking at by the strict written word, every building has a base body and a cap. This is a very short, squatty building that does have some architectural movement that Planning Commission previously accepted. So we said that's really up to Planning Commission to make that call to allow for, you know, not having a base to the building because of the context of what we are seeing here. And then I think the last comment that I had was just making sure that the glazing amounts they were figuring, most properties can't hit that 50% mark of glazing and void area, but again, it's a product that Planning Commission has previously accepted, so their architect is wanting to do what the Planning Commission previously has approved on Franklin. So with that, I will call up Mr. Huddleston, and then, oh, last note, they do have rooftop equipment. That rooftop equipment is proposed to be middle screening instead of a raised parapet because they're mostly in the middle of the building. I asked the architect to clarify that this one closest to what you'll see coming in their main entryway is below the parapet, so those staff comments are included. Staff did not have time to update any of those requests, but if Planning Commission would like to see some of those staff comments come out at the request of the applicant, we're more than happy to do so, but we believe that that should be your decision and not staff's. So with that, I will ask Mr. Huddleston to come up and go over the items that he had.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Good afternoon, Chairman Jones and Chairwoman Jones and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Bill Huddleston with Huddleston Steel Engineering. We're pleased to be able to present to you this Aldi development between new Lascasis and old Lascasis. I'm going to try to get to the site plan first. We've addressed what we think, well, the master plan first. We've addressed all the comments, we believe, and I wanted to run through some of the more major ones with you. They're not really major, but they're more significant, I guess. On the master plan, you'll see to the right here that we verified the acreages for the different lots. At one point, and maybe still, the city's GIS shows this area here as TDOT right-of-way, and it's not TDOT right-of-way, it's been abandoned a long time ago, and we were able to provide the record book and page of that document where TDOT transferred it to the Huddelstons. We've also labeled the loading zone in front of the Aldi and added a couple of landscape islands to make sure that we have a shade tree at the beginning and end of every parking aisle. Then down to the site plan, we're noting signage on the building. The developer will be working with building and codes to see about getting a sign on old Lascasis Pike as well as new Lascasis Pike. We have downspouts on the building, and we show where the doors are on the building. Then we go to the perimeter landscaping sheet. Maybe we do, yeah. And it's kind of hard to see here, but we're showing, going ahead and planning perimeter landscaping throughout the south. That was a comment from Mr. Barbie, that he was looking for that, for tracks that are going to develop. He wants to go ahead and buffer the perimeter landscaping. We are still working along the north line, which is along Rutherford Boulevard. There's a lot of easements there, which means a lot of utilities, and so we're back and forth with the utility companies to make sure our landscaping will work for them. Then on the landscaping sheet itself, we made sure we have our calculations to have the correct number of 3-inch trees and 4-inch caliper trees. We've got the dumpster screened. We're screening the detention pond, which is on the north side of the site, and we have revised the formal open space, which is now in this area. We've pushed it closer to the front of the building where it'll be more visible. We have stamped concrete and some picnic tables there, and there are shade trees in all the islands. I'll stop right there and see if you have any questions about the site plans before I go on to architecture.
Any questions? Okay.
All right. There was an error while reading the screen. That needs a big help. I did something.
It's the next page. I don't know if you want this right now. You don't want to restart it.
There you go. While she's doing that, I'm going to go ahead and pass out to you a picture of the Franklin Road Aldi that you recently approved, I think within the last year. Bottom line is, the architects and Aldi want to build this same building, architecture-wise. They're hoping that because you approved it a year ago, that you'll be able to approve it today. There were some comments that Ms. Smith has showed you about the architecture, and the architects feel that they've addressed those at this point. As long as you're good with what was built on Franklin Road, this is the architecture they want to show here at this location. They have addressed the void areas that Ms. Smith mentioned, and those have been updated based on a Zoom meeting that they had with Ms. Smith. The membrane that she was talking about, it's a screen on the roof, and at one point they had it white, and that wasn't acceptable to staff, and I can understand that. So that membrane is now gray on the top of the roof there. Ms. Smith mentioned some machinery that may or may not be screened. Those are actually heat pumps that are 2 feet 6 inches in height, and the parapet there is 2 feet 10 inches in height, so it'll be screened. And she did show you the 10-foot, basically it's an antenna just going up off the top of the building. It's negligible visual impact for that. And she mentioned the trash enclosure, which is a wood grain finish similar to the nichiah panels?
Nichia.
Nichia panels. And they've revised the color to match the nichiah panels. And the dumpster's been oriented to match the plans as it was on the Franklin site as well. I'll be happy to try to answer any architecture questions you have.
So Bill, this membrane thing that they're talking about happening, is it just around the units, the HVAC units, or is it literally on the edge of the building?
No, I think it's on the backside of that taller piece. You see, I think it's on the backside of this thing.
Angled piece.
Is that correct? Yeah. So it's where that taller piece is higher than the roof. It's on the backside of it.
Okay.
They've got that gray.
Okay.
I'm just saying, you can scroll to the pictures that they did take. So this, you can see a little bit of that backside of what was on, Bill was showing that highest roof level as you're looking at the sides. Here you can see again a little bit of the metal screening around their HVAC equipment. This is the same way that they've treated their dumpster, their enclosure is sitting down here below, basically the grade level, and here you can see it head-on, again with that gate on the front side of it. And then you can see the building comes all the way down here with no base of building, but it is a shorter building for the size and scale of it. But again, and then here you can see a little bit more of that parapet from the right-of-way. So the architect was stating, really you can't see much, and they really want to keep all of the water out of that backside, and that's why they have that membrane that goes on the backside of the parapet.
If there are none, I'll make a motion that we approve... There are none, and I make a motion that we approve subject to all staff comments.
Second. Thank you.
Motion and seconds. Ms. Jekka.
Quick clarification. So are we going to take the building that's built currently as the example and will remove some of those staff comments that are related to the backside?
Yeah, my motion would be the building similar to what's on Franklin Road.
My second would agree with that.
Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Ms. Saverwater.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Silas.
Aye.
Mr. Rice.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye. Thank you so much, Commissioner Smith. Next, we have new business. We have a zoning application for approximately 29.5 acres located along Old Salem Road to be rezoned from CF to RS-12. Alcorn Properties LLC is the applicant. Ms. Donovan, good afternoon.
Thank you, Chair Jones. The request before you this afternoon is to rezone a property on Old Salem Road from commercial friends to a single-family residential with a 12,000-square-foot lot. The subject properties are located on the south side of Old Salem Road and contain about 29 and a half acres of currently vacant land. So the developers included, and it's in your packet as well, a layout of what they would like to do due to some environmental limitations because of Puckett Creek. They are proposing a single-family residential subdivision along this area. There was a prior site plan approved for a portion of this piece of property where that applicant had conducted a flood study and identified large portions of the property as either being in the flood plain or the floodway. The city has currently undertaken a flood study for this portion of Puckett Creek as well. That's in the early stages, but this development could, if it's rezoned, the development could be constrained by the flood study being conducted. So the adjacent properties in this area are primarily single-family residential. To the north, you have some large lots, single-family residential. To the east and south is currently vacant land. And then to the west, you have the existing Cherry Grove subdivision. As far as zoning in the area to the north and northeast is currently in the county is zoned medium-density residential. Property to the south is zone CF and CH, and then Cherry Grove is zoned RS-15 currently. So the future land use map for this area identifies it as commercial general, which is typically looking at commercial development along collectors' arterials with, it's auto-oriented with parking infrastructure and attracting people from outside of the Murfreesboro area to come to that area. You know, however, RS-12 doesn't, RS-12 doesn't fit that bill, but staff believes this is an appropriate use of the transition policy that's in our comprehensive plan, as this site is, has a natural physical burial to the south for Puckett Creek to provide a transition between the commercial uses that could develop on New Salem Highway and the residential large-lot subdivision to the north side of Old Salem Road. So Planning Commission will need to discuss the rezoning request and schedule a public hearing. Staff recommends the Planning Commission schedule the public hearing for June 5th.
Just some thoughts. After last week, the City Council had received tons of complaints with flooding in this area, and I would really like to see the flood study, the city flood study before we vote on this project, based off of all the calls we got last week.
Yeah, I too am concerned about the history of the property and being so quick to rezone it to RS-12 when we don't have that flood study back yet, especially considering the proximity to Puckett Creek and when you take into consideration that significant traffic we're having on New Salem Highway, specifically at this intersection. I don't know how I feel about 21 additional curb cuts at that intersection, which is what this site plan, proposed site plan, looks like. So is there, is there a representative that wants to talk?
Answer right there.
My name is David Alcorn. I live at 113 Lexington Court, and I'm the owner of Alcorn Properties. So, yes, and we developed Belmore, which Thursday morning had some water in the backyards and over the road there. I do believe there was a plan that roadway crossing where the river, or the drainage crosses the road there, there's some undersized pipes that, when we did Belmore, was on the schedule supposedly to create some box culverts, and city staff might know more about that. I think that kind of dams up everything that's coming from the Rockvale side. This is beyond that. We were, the study is, I think, maybe six months or so out, but our plan will take in consideration, I mean, that study will take in consideration with our plan. These are 21 homes that, or 20 houses, one's a common area. There's no curb on the road. It's a county-designed road. So, and they're all one-acre lots or better, all 105-foot-wide lots, because most of the back of that property is in the flood plain, and then some of it's in the floodway. So these would all front Old Salem. And the reason for RS-12 versus RS-15 is just that extra five feet that that would allow for the large-sized homes that would be on the front side of this property right up against, right against Old Salem Road.
So there would be 21 driveways?
20 driveways, yes.
20 driveways.
That one common.
On Old Salem.
But I take it you feel like the flood study is going to come back and not show a potential floodway, flood or flooding all the way up to the potential building sites? Is that what you're thinking?
Correct. There's going to be some flood, there's going to be a flood plain that comes up to the building sites that we would have to
Elevate.
Change that elevation, but floodway, we're going to stay out of, obviously, the floodway.
But you're thinking the floodway could potentially be different than what?
I just want to see it.
I want to see it too, before we rezone it to RS-12. I mean, the future land use map calls for commercial, and we don't have any significant reason to change it. So I want to see the flood study before I can support a potential reason.
So the flood study, would anybody here understand or know what the timeframe of a flood study is? I mean, that could be six months, it could be...
Ms. Knopf can respond to that?
Who can? Okay.
Yes, we have a consultant onboard, Volker, who's currently conducting the flood study. I mean, just now getting started because we just got some field survey work done, and it's, it's going to be a long process to get that approved by FEMA, because once they can, once they finish the study and submit to FEMA, there's going to be some back and forth between the consultant and FEMA before we get a final or a conditional letter of map provision. So I can't really say for sure how long the timeframe is going to be before we get the flood study, but it's probably in like a nine- to 12-month process.
What about the, what about the prior study that was completed?
SEC did a preliminary flood study, but it was specifically for that project, for the Redeemer Church. And so since that, since that project, project did not go into fruition, we can't accept it, and we're already conducting our own flood study due to future development wanting to go in, like the Wawa at 99 and Veterans and the T.DOT Highway, 99 road widening project. So all that is having an impact on the flood plain where there's not a detailed study. So that is the reason for the need for the conditional letter of map provision.
So this is a case that right now it wouldn't be suitable to build upon because of the floodway, but then you're hoping in the new study?
Well, if they were to build now, they, they will have, there's a potential that they will be impacted by the future clomar. So it could, it's too preliminary to tell whether, how, how high the flood plain's going to be or where the floodway is going to go, because right now, this is an unmapped flood plain. There's no, if you look on a few maps, it's not flood plain. It's an unstudied stream.
So how, I'll show my ignorance, and David might, can answer this question, or Mr. Harney might, but how is the developer going to know at this point in time at what level those lots need to be, or is that a stupid question?
Well, they would, they would develop to what our flood plain ordinance says. There's some specific language on how you develop in an area on a map stream.
Okay.
But since we know we are doing a clomar, they're under discretion. So they would develop at their own risk.
And based upon this clomar that you're saying, then they, the developer could be obligated to do something different even though it's, the structure has already been built?
Yeah, I mean, what I'm saying is if they develop per the regulations per unmapped stream.
Right.
Knowing that there's an updated flood study, there, you know, there's a potential that they could build the homes not high enough.
Yeah.
Because of what the flood, what the new flood study says.
And would they be required to remediate that?
Yeah, that's what, it's
Grandfather Dan.
That's the risk of developing near flooding source. And that is why we can't allow Wawa to build right now because of the, because of the...
So David, do you understand this?
I do.
Okay.
So it would just be if you, if you built them and sold them, then it's the homeowners.
Right, yeah.
Well, can I talk a little? A little bit about what's happened that Councilwoman Wright was just discussing. When that big rain happened the last couple of weeks, the Rockvale area received an alarming amount of flooding. Some of it was unavoidable because of the weather, and some of it, we have learned, was avoidable. And so what I've learned about this week, which I wish I didn't know so much about now, was the snail-shell cave system. It's all underneath Rockvale. And these massive sinkholes that I actually went to yesterday and stood on top of, these sinkholes are absorbing this water and spitting it out on the other side of Highway 99 in people's backyards. So the recent development that we approved and I supported, the Riley Project on 99 by the school, is having significant flooding issues and is actually causing, potentially causing some significant flooding issues all the way in Rockvale Meadows, really far And so that's just, this is, this is a kind of a developing topic for City Council right now and a developing topic for the Rockvale area, and we have received a lot of phone calls. I spent four hours out there yesterday. I have, Lord knows how long meeting out there, again tomorrow. So I don't know how you guys want to proceed. I mean, this is kind of strange because it's a, we're just voting to have the public hearing, right? Today, we're just voting to actually schedule the public hearing.
I don't mind having a public hearing.
Yeah.
I don't think I'm going to support it, but I don't mind having a public hearing.
Right, I think there's some more work. We probably need to have some conversations before we post for a public hearing, have the people come out for a public hearing, for us to need to go back to the table. It's up to the developer, your discretion, but I think there's a lot more people that need to be involved in this conversation before this gets to council. A lot more people.
Mr. Harney, did you have something else you wanted to add?
Well, I just wanted to give a little background history to the whole area and all. I represent Rucker Donnell Foundation that basically has owned a lot of this property up and down New Salem, about almost 500 acres. Several years ago, back in the early 2000s, we did a master plan and zoned all of this up and down through there. Most of the stuff, all the stuff on New Salem was blanket zone, commercial highway. Fast forward to, we sold 100 acres to a group, Cornerstone Development, that did Carlton Landing, which is down closer to Rockvale School. And because we knew this drainage area was critical, SEC did a study of their own, independent of a core story, study because it was, you know, an unstudied stream. We did that so that could calculate the big culverts that had to cross this going into Carlton Landing to make sure they were going to be sized big enough to handle whatever the flood situations were there. Now, the existing study SEC did shows about half of this property, they interpret in the floodway. So you can't build on it, period, by their study. Now, I agree, I agree with you, Ms. Saverwater. I mean, there's, there's a, we had drones up Thursday, a whole lot of places. I've seen water on places I've never seen since, and I've lived here all my life, so a lot of different factors came into play. The whole system was full before we got, you know, six-plus-inch rain. So there's a lot of different variables out there. But just addressing two things. Number one, I really didn't think it was practical to zone across the creek, commercial highway, against Old Salem Road at the time, but that was sort of the way it came in and what was asked, you know, for us to blanket zone that. I really think that the creek is a, is a good buffer between commercial and some kind of residential. Now, don't disagree. We all need to know what the real flood issues are out there for everybody's purposes. I represent Redeemer, who owns it now as well, and they're going to build somewhere else. But just a little background on why it was zoned way back when. And then, like, SEC, I think, has done a reasonable job of their private study, trying to say, you know, basically, half of this property, they don't recommend we touch. So the other half, Mr. Alcorn would be building up to whatever that flood elevation is. I was involved in selling to Wawa, so we, we know about all the different issues that are going on right there. But there's a lot of background that's just didn't, you know, happen all of a sudden, so to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harney.
Public hearing?
I would think we can certainly, you know...
I'll make a motion to have the public hearing.
Well, I don't want to play devil's advocate, and if you're, well...
Yeah, I think we're just asking for...
Yeah.
We're more than likely, even if we have a public hearing, I think what we're hearing is it's not something that we're comfortable moving forward with anyway, but I'm sure we could have half of Rockvale come out here on June 5th.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think that's going to be to your benefit, David. I mean, I
End up well.
I met with half of Rockvale yesterday. You don't want that. They're, they're good people, they're passionate people, and they're, they're frustrated. And they have a reason to be in some, some cases. So, yeah, I think Ms. Jones is right. We can have a public hearing if you want.
Yes, I don't, I don't think we can tell you, no, we won't have a public hearing, but we would like you to strongly reconsider, maybe.
Okay. The, a couple of thoughts. One, flooding is based on elevation, so to play devil's advocate, there's a certain spot, SEC has done a study. There's a certain place that we know that, you know, unless something catastrophic, we're not, I understand the concerns over there, and I went over Thursday morning and took video and all that, and I looked at this property, and this property looked good, but all the created drainage before this property, flooding in the backyards of the Belmore folks and probably beyond and over the road. And I know, and I think city staff knows too, there's
And I know, and I think city staff knows too, there's, part of that problem is that those crunched 15-inch pipes that go under that road that have created a dam that backs that up. We've got a flood study that comes just about half a mile from this area. So we can follow those elevations, and I'm not an engineer. But we're, we're not, two things. One, we're not going to create the problem. We're going to help the problem with having a development there. Kind of helps, right now it just sits, and there's no place for that damned up water to go. The second thing is we're waiting on the flood study, just like we're waiting on that road correction. It may be 12 months, it may be two years. That holds not just a developer, but that holds the current landowners up to... And my understanding is our plan would now be considered in that flood study, if I'm correct, which then would incorporate a final look. Right now, it could just make that property useless how it currently sits. But if we design it properly, and then it will help all the neighbors of Rockvale, it'll help with the flood study, and then we'll have some property that's usable, usable. So that's my, I'll, I mean, I would like to stick with the zoning, but if we wanted, if we need to defer it for a month because June 5th, I'd be out of town, and I would rather be here. So if we wanted to defer it, I don't know if we'd defer it.
We want you to be sure and hear everything that we hear. So we would love for you to be here.
I want to be here.
So what's our July...
So do we defer it, or do we, do we accept this point and just defer from June 5th to another, the next planning commission? Or how do we do that?
The, the next planning commission evening meeting is on July the 10th. I think we're expecting probably, if I've read my emails from Huddleston Steel and SEC, probably about six or seven public hearings that night. We have that the second weekend of July because of the holiday the previous week. Our second Wednesday in July.
Maybe August.
I, I just think it's going to be hard to, not that we're here to convince everybody that this is going to be to their betterment, but I just think it's going to be difficult unless you're, if somebody's going to be here and talk about the SEC plan that's already been done. And this is going to be, you know, I don't know. I just think you're, you're up against a difficult situation here. And I mean, I, granted, you can't wait, a developer can't wait 12 months, can't wait 24 months, you know. But I can remember, you know, the last development that we did that was across from the school. I mean, that was very difficult. And, you know, my guess is it barely passed planning commission. And my guess is it's not going to pass. That, that's neither here nor there. I'm getting off on a tangent here. But my guess is it's not going to pass City Council, so... All right, well, if we vote to have it for the public hearing on June 5th, and then I can, because there's, before I can make that decision, I think, one is my, the property owners, you know, I have a certain timeframe. So now we have to look at that timeframe and see how that fits. So I'd have to ask them. Second thing is I might then check with staff and say July or August. But either way, whether it's June 5th, July, or August that we meet, we just have to be very prepared to answer the concerns. Which the concerns, I don't think affect, we're not affecting their concerns. There's concerns outside of what we're doing. It just so happens what we're doing is around the area where their concerns are, so...
Can I ask our legal team, strong over here, full on, to give us some guidance here as to what our options are? You know, I don't, I don't know that I'm hearing that we feel strongly about scheduling it right now, but I want to do what we need to do as a body to allow Mr. Alcorn to certainly schedule this if he, if he would like, if that, if that's what we're required to do.
Give us just a couple of seconds.
Got it.
I really want to see the clomer. Is that how you say it, clomer?
Clomar.
Clomar? Clomer? That's my southern accent coming out.
But I just want to make sure we legally are allowed to just say, no, we don't want to even have...
Jamie, I agree with you, but we could do that on any development property that is in the floodplain. I mean, and there's plenty of developments going on that are in the floodplain. And if we waited on a clomar for every one of them, then these people wouldn't be... I'm not saying it's not right here.
Isn't it my understanding that this one doesn't even have, it's not a flood map on it at all?
I get that.
We don't have anything to go off?
We don't have one to go by. We've always got one, they're always updating them, but...
I believe the operative language would be in Section 6 of the zoning ordinance. Let me come over to you because mine's not pulling up. Sure. Sorry to interrupt.
Not a reason, it's our five minutes.
Just a quick break right here.
Darren Gore in there.
He's holding his tongue. Would we like to recognize him?
Yeah, let's recognize our new city manager, Darren Gore.
Who is an expert on stormwater.
Imagine that.
Does he have a presentation for us?
You have a PowerPoint, Darren?
And congratulations to our, what's the official word? Elect, not elect, he's not elected.
City manager, uh...
Newly appointed. To be in July sometime, or what, do we have an official date? July 2nd. Congratulations. Yay. Very exciting.
Oh, I'm sure. Better be glad, I'll think of his name in a minute. So I have an update.
Mr. Alcorn, welcome back to the podium.
Thank you, thank you. So talking, I think we can work with the seller. We'll postpone it, we can go, we can postpone, and we'll revisit. We'll defer this today, and so we don't have to make that decision today, and...
And you'll ask us when you'll resubmit, when you'd like to back on for rezoning? We would look forward to that. Thank you, Mr. Alcorn.
All right.
All right.
Motion to defer.
I believe we have a motion to defer.
Second.
And plenty of seconds. Ms. Jaco? Vice Chair Halliburton?
Mr. Blomley, is everything okay?
So, so we're bound by the ordinance to schedule a public hearing within 90 days after a complete application has been accepted. So I think if Mr. Alcorn is wanting to not have a public hearing within that 90 days, his request needs to be to have the commission defer indefinitely with, and have him consent on the record to deferring indefinitely. Mr. Alcorn, is that your, is that your wish?
If it's not going to be in 90 days, we defer indefinitely?
Yes.
We're just saying today, we are deferring indefinitely, and we don't have this 90-day...
Window.
Just our only option is 90 days, so it can keep going.
That's what my motion is.
Second.
Do we have that? Carolyn, we got it? So we're, the applicant has requested to...
Indefinitely defer.
Indefinitely defer this item. And we have a motion and a second as such. Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Silas?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones? Aye. Thank you, Mr. Alcorn, for working with us on that and all those others involved. We appreciate all the help getting, getting to that point. Okay, so we will move on to the next item we have under new business. This is an annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 10.33 acres located at 3061 and 3071 New Salem Highway. Philip and Tammy Dodd and Cornerstone Free Will Baptist Church are the applicants. Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Chair Jones. So before you this afternoon, we have an annexation petition and plan of service for two properties on the south side of New Salem Road. 3061 New Salem Road is owned by the Dods. The property currently has one existing single-family residence on it and contains about 5.23 acres. And the second property at 3071 New Salem Highway is owned by Cornerstone and has an existing church on 5.1 acres. So both of these properties are involved in TDOT's Phase 3 of the widening of New Salem Highway. And as part of that project, the septic fields are being overtaken, leaving them without a septic field. And city staff has recommended they seek an annexation to gain access to city sewer since they are losing those septic fields as a part of that, that highway project. The annexation area includes 10.33 acres and contains no new right-of-way for the city. The applicant is, has not submitted a companion rezoning request, so under our zoning ordinance, it'll be zoned RS 15. The annexation area is within our urban growth boundary, contiguous to our city limits on three sides, and within our service, service infill area of the comprehensive plan. Currently, we're working with other departments to prepare the plan of service, and we'll have that ready for you to review at the same time as the, the public hearing. Planning Commission will need to set up a public hearing to discuss the annexation petition and plan of services. Staff recommends June 5th for the public hearing.
Okay.
And just, just want to say that, that our Water Resources Department and our legal department have been working hand in hand with Mr. and Mrs. Dodd and the church. And this is an annexation request that we've been expecting for, for several years as they, as, as the plans for the Highway 99 have come to fruition.
Okay. Any questions?
If there are none, I move to set the public hearing on June the 5th.
Second.
Motion and second, Ms. Jaco? Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Silas?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones? Aye. Okay. Includes our new business. And next, we have staff reports and other business. And we do have at least one item on there that we know of, and it is the street naming, to name the River Rock Boulevard, B.C. Road Connector Road to Tommy Bragg Drive. City of Murfreesboro Administration Department is the applicant. Who's got this one? Mr. Blomley?
I have got this one. And if the cable department could put my screen up on the, on the monitors. So the city has been constructing the B.C. Road, River Rock Boulevard Connector Road. This is a roadway connection that is required as part of the city's agreement with Costco to be open this summer. This will provide an additional means of ingress and egress from the B.C. Road Warrior Drive Extension area back across the river to the River Rock Boulevard, Casein Lane area. And it's something, our major transportation plan that we adopted back in 2017, one of its major goals was to provide additional east-west connections over some of the impediments that exist right now, including the interstate, railroad, and the river. And so those form major barriers to roadway connections. And so this, this particular road includes a bridge over, over the Stones River. So the city's been working on constructing it. And it is, I believe, according to the latest update, proposed to be completed no later than August of this year, I believe. But, so we are getting near the point where we need to, to name it because it will be open to traffic soon, and we'll need to get signs fabricated. And so city administration has, has nominated Tommy Bragg Drive after our former mayor, Tommy Bragg, who served three terms as mayor from 2002 to 2014. And so the planning commission, according to our subdivision regulations, has final authority over street names. And so, you know, of course, we will bring only street names to you that we vetted with E911. 911 has vetted Tommy Bragg Drive's street name and has found that it does not duplicate or approximate, you know, phonetically sound like, like another street name within the, within the entire county. So we bring this request before you today and request for your consideration to name this new street, the Tommy Bragg Drive. And if you approve it, then we'll work immediately upon implementation of that, the naming of that street.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, Ms. Jaco? Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Silas?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones? Aye. Okay, that concludes what we know of our staff reports and other business.
What you know.
Any additional?
What you know of staff...
That's what I said, what I know of our staff reports. Did you have something more, Mr. Blomley?
Uh, just very briefly, just a reminder of our next meeting, which will be the special work session bus tour meeting, which will be on May the 28th, Tuesday, at 1:00 p.m., scheduled to end at 3:00 p.m. And we will assemble outside of the first floor parking garage at Tommy Martin Drive, right there in front of the old Fleet Building, in that vacant parking lot right there. The other thing is I emailed y'all yesterday. There's a scheduled joint planning commission, city council workshop, which would be the next city council regular workshop meeting, which would be on June the 13th at 11:30 a.m. Planning Commission, I've been told, is welcome to eat lunch at 11 o'clock with city council and staff, and then we'll have the...
Include us in your lunch.
We really want y'all to eat.
We're going to keep you here a while.
And then, and then the, the work session meeting will be at 11:30. I've heard from a number of, of y'all already, and so we look forward to having a...
I think Jamie and I'll be there.
Yeah.
I figured.
We got two invitations.
And Mr. Blomley, just so you know, I did invite incoming city manager Darren Gore to our bus tour on the 28th.
Well, certainly.
He's going to be joining us. I invited him first.
The more the merrier.
Everybody rubbing shoulders. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Blomley?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. No other business, we stand adjourned.